Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Athens Select Board Meeting.
We will call the meeting to order.
Adjustments to the agenda?
I just wanted to follow up on Anna's comments from last meeting.
And you would know better than us certainly.
I don't know.
But usually when it is about an employee...
It's not. It's not about it. It's about a proposed policy. It's nothing about a specific individual.
Okay. All right. That will be fine. And we can do that in the courts and officials. Is that reasonable?
Yep.
All right. Minutes from the prior meeting.
I will make the motion. We accept them as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comments, no longer than three minutes if we can. I was going to announce that the court did issue a ruling on the suit that the town was involved in and found for the town and the commissioners' report. I know this has been difficult for everybody in and around the whole community. And if this is the end, or even if it's not, hopefully we can get back to being neighbors and hopefully things will work out with that. Hannah has a copy of the order from the court. And if anybody wants it, they can get a copy from her. All right. Public comments. We don't have any public comments. No, public comments. Public comments.
Yeah. I watched the recording from the Select Board last month and I saw two concerned citizens produce some photos of our road crew down in Harmonyville store taking a break and they're concerned about how their tax money is spent. I can understand that. I appreciate that. But I just want to note that this practice has been going on for 25, 30 years. And it's only in the last couple of years that it's been brought up regularly at these Select Board meetings. I think it's time that the Select Board steps up and does something. Create a policy and settle this once and for all so we don't have to come here every month or every other month and try to hash this out as who's doing what and when and where. And just put all of this behind us.
All right. Any other public comment?
Yeah. Based on what he's saying, I want to know the answers about from last meeting. Was anything checked out? Were these guys goofing off?
Well, like was mentioned earlier, if it is about an employee, we are not going to discuss any disciplinary or any actions that were taken with the employee in a public meeting. Krista would certainly know better than me about this, but is that not reasonable?
I don't know. I think it's employee discipline, but I'm not sure. So I can't speak on behalf of that.
Well, the way I figure it out is what figures for what the salary is and how long they're goofing off, the cost of the town, $12,500 a year. So shouldn't we begin to reimburse that? Those $12,500, I think, should go back to the town budget when somebody's not working. And you can use that for the garbage pickup because they have no money for garbage.
I can take a go down. Got a copy of the personnel policy. There is nothing written pertaining to employee breaks. I understand from past experience, you normally get a half hour unpaid break and normally like two or 10 to 15 minute coffee breaks paid on an eight hour shift, most places. Is that safe to say?
Vermont has... Sorry, can I?
Yes.
Vermont has no law governing or requiring breaks outside those that are required by the FLSA. So what happens in that situation is an employer is bound by its written policies regarding breaks, but they're not required. So what I was going to actually be proposing earlier and did not talk to them about this was a policy about timekeeping and breaks. So I was going to talk about that later because right now we don't have one. And in line with that, I want to make really clear that since we don't currently have a policy about those things, employees could not be in trouble for violating a non-existent policy. So that's just what I want to write note now is that there's no policy therefore an employee couldn't violate a non-existing policy.
Okay. Then I will mention one other thing that is in the policy. Section 13, I believe. Use of town equipment. Except as otherwise provided in this policy, the use of town equipment or property for personal use is prohibited. Taking the town property out of town for 16 miles to get a cup of coffee, I would say that is an improper use of town property. Am I wrong in that also?
We're not going to get into debating about personnel rules or who's violating, who's not violating.
And I think also why is, why are town vehicles not, don't have any signage on them? Town of Athens.
That would be a good thing to have.
I think it would be a very good thing.
It's DLT regulation anyway.
I know we talked about it when we got those trucks, but...
We didn't.
Oh, nothing that came...
$250 a truck. That's what it costs. You can have it done right in the chapter. Vermont D E's do them every day. $250 bucks. We've got our 10 wheel down up there. You can look at the sign on the door. That's been done. All our pickups have been done from them up there.
Is it a magnetic sign? You just hook to the door?
Nope.
Oh, detail.
The details. They just... You tell them what you want in the morning. You go up the next day and they put them right on, iron them on. It's not that expensive.
Yeah, I think that would be a good...
I would, I'm going to make a motion that we ask Vermonties to make up signage as well.
Well, let's find out where we can get them as a better report prices and stuff. And where we're going to get the money too. That's $500 bucks.
I understand that.
It's $500 bucks that we would budget for.
We don't have right now.
But there's a chance that we can find something cheaper at some other place or may not look as nice, but...
So I'll withdraw my motion to save Vermonties. I would like to look into it and it's a very strong possibility. It might not be able to be done until the next budget year.
That's reasonable. I will second that. All those in favor?
So David, you didn't show up to see that culvert.
I did come by and I didn't find anybody, but I only came by once, so...
I assume you will come by again?
I can come by again, yes.
Sooner than later.
If I have the time. But yes, I can absolutely come by and look at the culvert. When would be a good time?
Well, sometimes during the weekend if you're available.
I can talk to you.
Yep.
Is that enough of a culvert?
Yeah. So yes, I will stop by, so. Anything else?
I don't think so.
That was one thing I was going to ask you about. And what are we going to do about them going across in the lawn of the grader every time they come down through and just wing that car, put the gravel out in there? They goddamn near got the bush this time. They moved the wall again on the wall. And I paid for it the last time. I brought the bills to you guys. Never heard nothing about it. That was a year and a half ago. Now it's happened again. How many times are we going to let this happen? The road has been walked out up through there for over 70 days. They go up and down the mill hill with the grader. All they'd have to do is take the grader, stop at the bottom, push it back up the hill, David. It's so simple to stop the problem. But they definitely know it. They just go up the hill, come down, and run the grader right out across my lawn. And I'm about sick of it. And the other thing you all want to know is 10 years ago, this town voted to buy a backhoe. And we were told by a man on the committee for finance committee that once we buy this backhoe, we'll never have to rent another backhoe again unless we're doing a box culvert. Why do we have outside backhoes putting our regular culverts in on a road?
I think that had to do with the number of people that weren't able to work for the town at the time.
David, that culvert, they haven't fixed that culvert. And I know the guy that was asking about it, it's been six months and they hadn't fixed it. So what would be another couple of weeks till you got a man to help you? It just don't make any sense. We've got a $120,000 machine sitting in the doyad. We're paying $140 an hour for one to do the work. And you say you have no money. You can't even put your, stick it on your own truck. But we can hire backhoes to do work on my own hill. It makes no sense what's running.
Don?
No.
Okay. We will move on to Wyndham Regional, the scoping and USDA issues. Yes?
There are a couple more things.
Okay, go ahead.
What's the possibility of having a GPS monitor put in the truck, the one done?
Well, I don't know about that.
Insurance loves...
I don't know.
What about the black mold? I just read an article in the Vermont Journal on a kid 21 years old. He got contaminated somehow with black mold in the line of heat and gets died. Now, have you ever had that tested in the town garage? Is that black mold or not?
Well, we're bringing that up after Wyndham Regional, we're bringing that up.
Because...
The town garage with the mold and...
If you got mold in there, why are we still going to help in there? You know, we got one guy out now. Are we waiting for the other one to go out too?
Hopefully not. But we have got that on the agenda. All right. Anything else, Hannah?
Yeah. Regarding, there was a, somebody was proposing an addition to the garage. For office space and a bathroom last month. I heard Tom. Why do they need an office? We have these town offices that are not used anywhere near full time. So I don't believe we really need an office in the town garage. And furthermore, hasn't it, when that was poured, this foundation was poured out there? Wasn't that already set up to have a bathroom in there?
What was it, Tom?
It is.
It is.
It's all plumbed up for bathroom inside.
So why do we need to put on an addition for a bathroom if there's, it's already plumbed for a bathroom?
I think if you look right underneath it, it's a two box stairway it used to be. We used to keep the two box over top of the pipe so it don't get built. You look right underneath the two box, you see the toilet pipe and the water and everything is right there. It's all right, right? Well, it used to sit beside the furnace, but the furnace is in the ceiling now. But the other thing, David, if the town don't have the $250, I'll pay to put the name on that small truck.
Okay.
You just tell me when I can get it up there. Or I'll go, I'll go to Vermonties and I'll bring you a picture of what it's going to look like.
David, if you remember back in 2014, I brought up a lot of these issues. And Tom was on the Select Board, you were on the Select Board, and I was on the Select Board. I brought these issues up and they were brushed aside. And like I said, this has been going on for years. And I asked this question before. What has changed and now it's such a big issue?
All right. We're not going to get... Can I answer that? Tom answered their question. We're not going to get back and forth here in the group here.
The reason I'd like to answer that is you, Dennis, and I signed that paper right there. The reason that all this is coming up now is before the three of us signed that paper, the town had three ordinances. There are the dog ordinance, there are the speeding ordinance, and they had a store ordinance. Them three ordinances, when there's a problem in town, are taken care of by the Select Board or the Health Office or we have the Chair of the Government. So them three ordinances are being taken care of. Since we signed that book, any of them ordinance in that book, there ain't a one of them that's been taking care of for any problem that anybody has ever come and brought to the slotman to have it addressed and it's never been done. The book is right there. Dennis, myself, and you signed it in the law. And now you might throw all that book away because none of you use it.
Well, it's still in place.
Yeah.
And it's not an ordinance. It's the personnel rules and policies. Just a different name for it, but it's still what the town needs to follow, what the employee, us as the employer have to follow and what the employees are supposed to follow. Is that... But it's not technically an ordinance.
But they're not following it.
Dennis, we're not going to get back and forth all over.
David, I want equal time here because if you recall way back, they were using their personal trucks to drive around and they'd go over to Cambridge Ford Store every week, every month. We paid, no, David, $150, $200 a month we gave them for gas for their trucks. Finally, that stopped. We said use town vehicle, lock the mileage, right? And I said town vehicles do not leave town property or the town unless it's unofficial town business. You two guys rejected that way back in 2014 and 15. And now we come here every month and we listen to the same stories. It's time the five of you get together and do something.
That's fine. We're not going to be going back and forth in the, in the public comments about this between people. So we are moving on to Wyndham Regional.
That's me.
That's you.
So hi, everybody. I'm Maggie Foley. I live in Guilford. I'm here around the Municipal Technical Assistance Program. To be clear, I'm not an employee of Wyndham Regional Commission. I'm a subcontractor, so I'm an independent consultant. I work with nonprofits and municipalities all in southern Vermont. I just note that I'm not an employee, so if you have some questions specific to Wyndham Regional, I will have to go back to that for clarification at some points. And I might say things that are not, I'm not representing Wyndham Regional in everything I say. So I'm here subcontracting for the program. So the reason I'm here tonight is to introduce myself to you and talk a little bit about the scope of work for the Municipal Technical Assistance Program, which they shortened to MTAP, and make a game plan for how we want to approach getting started with that project. I understand that Chris Campini came maybe last, this summer and talked a little bit about the program and that there was agreement to move forward and that Athens was interested in moving forward. So this is kind of the next step in the formality. I don't know if everyone has seen the scope of work document, if Hannah...
You know what? I can't remember if I've forwarded it to anybody.
So why don't I just kind of talk through, talk through the broad strokes of it? I don't know if it's appropriate for you to vote by email after we talk about it or if I should read it and you can decide if you want to. Or I can go through point by point and you can decide. Any?
Why don't you go through it if it's here?
Okay. So the intention of the MTAP program is to provide assistance to Vermont's more rural communities in accessing state and federal dollars. The thought was over the last several years, there's been some big tranches of federal money coming into the state from the Infrastructure Act, ARPA CARES, and that smaller communities like Athens, like Guilford have had difficulty, you know, have had limited capacity to research the funding opportunities, apply for them, and to manage projects and grants when, if they get money. And so this is a proposed solution for that. The MTAP program has four phases and the first one being a needs assessment. So looking at what the town needs in terms of infrastructure, climate resilience, housing, all different areas, and identifying some key projects that would be helpful for the town. My understanding is that in Athens, that, that really has, there's been a lot of discussion over needs over many years and there's been kind of two projects that have been zeroed in on. Certainly the town garage is something that I've heard raised a lot and there's a lot of, you know, work gone into what exactly is needed for the town garage and there's more work going in with the scoping study that's coming up. And then also the, is it Community Center is the appropriate name? Yeah, this former school turning into a community center.
Yeah.
So phase one of this is really zeroing in on those, on those needs. In Athens, it might be prioritizing within those two projects if people really feel like there's already clarity that those are the top two projects for the town to pursue. So that's phase one. Phase two is called an opportunity assessment, which is taking the defined projects and matching them with funding that might be available. I see that in your case, Vermont League of Cities and Towns has done some of that preliminary research and kind of given some documents that show what possible funding there would be for the garage, the town records, and kind of those connected projects. And I would, and that, that opportunity assessment can build on the work that's already been done. We don't need to, you know, reinvent the wheel. We can review those sources and see if there's any additional ones. I was really sorry to hear that Athens no longer qualifies for the USDA rural development grants.
I don't think that they've heard about that.
Okay, so I'm very sorry to hear. I heard from the folks at, yeah, that's kind of...
Why is that?
I don't know. Because they've done some revaluation.
Okay, so I talked with Mike McConnell and he says that with the 2020 census data that the USDA just got last week, that the median household income in Athens has gone up $24,000, which makes us ineligible for the grant money. So that's all I know. I don't know, I don't know what the cutoff is. I don't know how our median income...
That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And from what I understand, and I will dig deeper into this if you all are interested, you are not the only town that had that very abrupt change of no longer ineligible. There was another town, I can't remember exactly who it was, who was very surprised to hear that they were suddenly no longer eligible and felt like the numbers were surprising.
Your population went down from like 420 to 380.
Right.
So was this at 2020, when the census was done, that the figure was arrived at, or is that now?
Hannah sounds like she has more information than I do. All I heard was that Athens was not eligible.
What now is the considered...
It's whatever data came out of the 2020 census. So it takes a while, I guess, to trickle down to the agencies. They were, they were going on 2010 census data until last week. And apparently now they have new data and it changes...
Changes that.
Are we disqualified now till 2030?
I, I'm happy to do more research. I just heard that news.
Till the next census.
Till 2023, probably.
Unless, unless they save it every 10 years.
Yeah, but it took three years.
It took three years to this, 2033.
So I'm really happy that within 10 minutes of meeting you all, delivering that kind of news, but...
So I, does anybody know if there's an appeal process to this or...
You know, I, as far as Mike McConnell was going to ask back to Alex Scopier at the USDA, I haven't heard back from him yet.
So as, and as a part of this project, looking at phase two, I think what I can do is help you track down that information and help do the research to kind of leave no stone unturned in terms of funding sources.
I mean, it's very unfortunate right now because we've just engaged an architect to do scoping work specifically for that grant. And so, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's really...
And I don't want to get in the weeds too much. Do we know if it is, they go on the entire population or will one or two people in town throw the survey off or...
I don't know. And I'm happy, you know, I just heard that news, had nominated all of you and I'd be happy to look into it because I think it's very disappointing.
An average of $24,000 is incredible.
Increase.
Especially in a town like Athens.
Yeah, right.
That's very hard to...
And an average of 400 people, that's incredible.
Well, what did it say that the median income was?
I have not seen any documents related to it. I just heard from...
No, I don't know anymore than what I said.
But up 24,000.
So in the face of that news though, I'll just continue giving a little overview if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure. So take the projects, match them with funding, which at this point, you know, I was reviewing the VLCT documents. I think every project mentioned that USDA rural development funding, right? But there's other funding out there, whether it's, I mean, you have your ARPA balance, MERP, and then there were several other sources listed and there's more research to be done. So taking the projects, matching them with funding sources, that's phase two. Phase three and four are providing assistance to support grant applications. I think because of Mike's existing relationship with Athens, that would be a place that Mike from Wyndham Regional might support Athens. I would kind of pass the torch to him with the funding applications. And then also phase four is project management. So helping with any permitting, any other things that need to help, that you need help with to implement the projects. So there, those are the four phases. The timeline that Wyndham Regional is giving is to work on phase one in the fourth quarter of this year and phase two in the first quarter of 2023. I've spoken with Hannah to kind of get up to speed on Athens and it sounds like there's quite a sense of urgency and a little bit of maybe spinning your wheels around some of these projects and kind of wanting to make decisions and if you're going to move forward, move forward. And I, and I respect that. So I think that would be something I would take into account, working with you on the timeline. So this is a project that is funded through the state. The funding passes through to Wyndham Regional and Wyndham Regional provides the technical assistance and subcontracts the technical assistance. So there is no financial obligation for the Town of Athens for this support. You won't be invoiced. This is, the money runs entirely through Wyndham Regional. I am a subcontractor for Wyndham Regional and the grant would support my work to support Athens's efforts. What you would agree to offer is a point person and I think Hannah has signed up to be the point person for me and to help support progress moving forward with this research and these funding applications. And so that's essentially the nuts and bolts of the scope of work. It outlines those responsibilities, what Wyndham Regional is responsible for providing you, what you are responsible for providing Wyndham Regional, and then talks about the different phases. And so if that is some, you know, you have already kind of given the preliminary agreement that this sounds helpful and if you continue to think, to think that, I think signing onto the scope of work would be a great next step to kind of get the formal process going.
So would you need a motion from us?
I would need a motion from you, yes.
I will make that motion that we, that we engage in the scoping work through Wyndham Regional.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Okay. And so with that approval, what we can talk about now is how to move forward with the planning. And I'd love to hear from you all, what would be your priorities for moving forward that planning? I'm working with some towns that they want to look at everything. They want to look at childcare, housing, emergency preparedness, roads and bridges, and just, you know, name as many projects as they can and then see what might be out there for funding. I feel like perhaps you might be on a different end of the continuum and kind of have zeroed in a little bit on what your priorities and what the needs for the town are. And I promise I won't torture you by making you do that big vision planning if that's not where you want to be. But I'm curious from you all if you think there'd be any benefit in looking at any other projects that the town needs.
Sandy, at our, the meeting that we had a few weeks ago, and I think you were there too many of us, oh, and Janet, sorry. Wasn't it the, the main priority was the roof for the town garage? And then any improvements there? And then in terms of the community center, and in terms of improvements, it was trying to figure out both how much it would cost to get the bathroom as well as a potential office storage space. And then the other thing that was important was in terms of the community center, getting a vault that could store our vital town documents. Did I miss anything?
No, I believe that's what we...
But I, I think that like the main one that came up was the best way to do the roof for the garage.
Right. So when I'm carrying out the town garage project, I'm thinking about one, it is one big project with a lot of potential components. And from my experience in applying for grants, it's sometimes wise to leave your options as open as they can be. And so kind of thinking about the town garage project as one big project instead of a... as one big project instead of a piecemeal project might be a really beneficial way to go because there might be creative ways that we can pair different funding opportunities to work together to cover the whole project. And I'm concerned that if you go directly for the roof, and let's say dip into your ARPA, that you might, you know, we might be able to find roof money, and then you could use the ARPA somewhere and, you know, have a positive impact on your overall finances by funding as creatively as possible. But I also understand the scoping study isn't happening tomorrow. So I'm trying to balance that information from that scoping study, even if it was specifically for USDA rural development to start, will be helpful for other funding sources, for sure.
We might actually get it fairly soon.
Okay.
Don, Don Capenzelli here might have more information from the architect about when he's planning on delivering drawings, but.
I, I don't recall what he gave me. He's had, I don't really give me a date.
I kind of think I've heard mid-October-ish. So it'd be quite soon.
Okay, because the documents I had in writing sounded very 2024. So that's exciting.
He agreed to move this project up so that we could meet the USDA grant deadline, so.
And we had some funding for the scoping work that we had to get done early, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So mid-October is really not far away, and so I feel like the results from the scoping study will be helpful because we don't have to then create a spreadsheet with our best guess of cost estimates for the different priorities and get those all blown out of the water, right? If we wait for the scoping, we'll have more information. And then I can start looking for funding sources for different components, but really treating it as one whole project.
I think the priority was just operating from a priority of we really need to make sure that that roof is good to go.
Yeah, and you need to get it done, right? You've been talking about it for a long time.
Well, we need a safe place for them to, to work out of. And if it's mold and if it's things like that, we have to fix it. So sooner rather than later.
Okay. And so for my consideration, the needs assessment, I can pull together different documents that you've had, different conversations that you've had around the town garage and the community center, really with a specific prioritization of town records within those, kind of within how we're looking at the potential for that project, and start developing the needs assessment from there and really articulating the different components. Does that sound like in line with what would be helpful for you all? Okay. As I work on that, you know, Hannah will be my point person, and I don't know if you all function mostly that I should come back to select board meetings to offer updates, or if you, you know, if there'd ever be a subcommittee structure that would be helpful to move things along.
Probably wouldn't have a subcommittee structure, but we would, I mean, we don't need you to come to every meeting or every two meetings or something, but to keep us up to date with it, we have a report, it's what's going on, where it is, where things are, and then, I don't know, every two months, three months, something, four months.
So keep in touch with Hannah. Keep, make sure that I know what's, you know, the kind of current event that's happening here, pair with the scoping study, and come back to present a little bit of the prioritization of that.
And of course, if you need to come to a meeting to get us a vote on something.
Okay.
Well, yeah, certainly. But I'm just saying, I'm sure she doesn't want to travel up here every Thursday.
It was a pretty drive night in audio books. I wasn't mad.
Wait, wait, wait until December, January.
Okay.
Yes.
And is it Krista?
Yes.
You mentioned that there was the most recent conversation about priorities and really focusing on the roof. Was that at the last select board meeting?
It was, we had a, what would you call it?
The ARPA meeting. So I have the notes from that meeting. So really, that still represents the most up-to-date thinking. There's been no significant shifts since then.
Nope, no, that was it. Because that was last month.
Yeah, it was pretty recent. Okay. Great. Well, are there any questions I can answer for you about this project, how I can support the town?
Do you need a signature on the scope of work today?
I think you can, it can be electronic. An electronic signature from Chris that I can email you, and with the vote, I think you can just put a signature in there.
Usually David signs stuff, so. But I think you can sign it. If it's mine, I'll get it in front of you.
Okay, great. Any other questions or thoughts on this? Great. Well, it's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too, Mary.
I hope it's not rude if I duck out and start my.
No, not at all.
I mean, I can't imagine you wouldn't want to stay.
It's fun.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Boards and officials. Don, boards and officials.
Our cemetery commission canceled its September meeting. We'll be meeting again first Wednesday in December. And that's our annual budget meeting.
That's it?
Yeah, yeah.
Community center?
Chili cook-off.
What?
Chili cook-off.
Damn chili cook-off. September 30th, chili cook-off, five to seven. There are three prizes, first, second, and third places. They are all gift cards of different denominations. What else is?
So the first prize is a hundred bucks to J&amp;H Hardware. So that should get you to want to enter. If you're gonna enter, please just let me know. We just need a card that has all the ingredients for the chili. And you get a trophy, so.
We also need to know so we can set up the electricity the right way, because if people are plugging in crock pots, we don't want to blow a fuse.
Yeah, I'm actually, I've been looking into that. I just haven't gotten a chance to email you. But I think we're in good shape circuit-wise.
Please come. I've been trying to get this happen for a few years, and it's very important to me that this goes well. So please come.
Those are signs. I haven't seen any.
I haven't put up signs. Why not? Because I didn't think of that, because I'm a millennial, and everything I do is online.
So we can use, we can use the town.
She's nodding. I made a Facebook event and a digital poster. Stop.
So you get a poster board, Krista. You get some Sharpies.
Well.
Well, we also didn't want to put up signs too early because of the fact that it has been raining.
Thanks for covering.
And if we buy poster board and stick it outside, and it rains for the next week.
Well, they're using their little town on a quarter-down-by-the-line weekend.
Yeah, we can do that. And then also, we're gonna have another Halloween party, because our last Halloween party was awesome. So we have our Halloween party coming up in October, and I've been told I'm not allowed to do my hay game inside this year. So that'll be a bit of an adjustment.
Yeah, the hay game has to go outside.
It was a hit. So. I have school board. I have a school board from Lynn Morgan. I'm reading it from my phone. The new Sept, October 2023. The new Septic pumps installed last month, and all is working as it should. We are glad that this trial is behind us. School is off to a good start. The children have been working at earning Panther Paws when they are kind, act safe, persevere, and show care for the community. Once they fill their jar, there's an all-school reward. This month, there was a tea party. Each student, each student chose a choice of tea and were given a honey pop to swirl in their tea. All had a fun time. Save the date on September 26th. There will be an open house from five to six. Hope many will come. The PTO in the school have a food booth at the October 7th Fall Fireman's Sale in Grafton. They're asking for food donations for their booths. All the proceeds from this go toward special events and other needs of the school. If you could help, call the school and let them know. A highlight in the cafeteria is the new milk program. The SU has rolled out a pilot bulk organic milk program district-wide. All the schools are being provided with bulk organic milk from Miller Farm to serve the students. So far, this is going very well. There's a lot less waste as the students are not throwing away partial cartons full of milk. Students fill their cup with what they want, and many are coming back for seconds. An after-school program is still being worked on. Since we were unable to get staffing last year, we lost our 21 seat grant, which is how the program had been paid for in recent years. The SU's after-school program coordinator has been looking into the use of ESAR funds to support two adults from three to five. And this can be pulled together. There is still the fact that we're unable to run late buses this year, so parents will need to pick up their children from school at 4:45. A survey has been sent home with this students. It is critical that all parents take the time to fill out the survey and get back to the school. On September 18th, we had our third community forum. Thank you for those who joined via Zoom. There were a number of questions and concerns brought up. Some were able to discuss that night. Others will need to seek advice or pass on to the graphic select board. Stay tuned for the next forum date. Until then, if you have any questions, please contact Lynn or myself. That's all.
Hannah, anything for boards and officials?
Yep. Treasurer stuff, taxes have been collected, most of them. There's about $95,000 still delinquent. And, yeah, so you'll see, I did in the warrant today, there's the school taxes are going out.
Yep.
And that's already reflected in these, stuck in the financial reports you have in front of you. I haven't allocated funds to the separate funds yet, like the paving fund and the equipment fund. I plan to do that this month. So that's not reflected in the balance sheets right now. We have a new laptop all set up, and NIMRIC is now on the cloud for both myself and the listeners. And that's going relatively smoothly. No major pickups in that. Yeah, and I was gonna tell you that you're no longer, we are no longer eligible for the USDA grant, but we've heard that already. And the Dead River repair folks are going to come to work on the fill pipe on this oil tank on October 16th. So I think that's all that I have.
I mean, I was quite shocked to hear that we were no longer eligible due to, if you want to share those numbers, the increase. If not, it's fine.
It says that prior median income was $32,273 for male and $20,625 for female. They say the average household income is $89,660 now.
And then you got $95,000.
But that's an average. So that means a couple, a couple millionaires moved into town.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if that threw.
That was my guess also, is that there's like a few very high-income people that were throwing it off.
But is it figured from the 2020 or from what happened with property values bought and things censored?
It's the census.
It's the 2020 figures. So it's the census figures. It's not what happened after.
Yeah, it's from the 2020 census.
I know that they still continue to calculate, so I don't know that, though.
I believe it's all the data from that census.
That's crazy.
I mean, it's possible that that census collection continued for some time after 2020, but I mean, it's, as they still call it, the 2020 census. It may have wrapped up in 2022, but.
I believe they will still go for figures and estimates and things like that.
I don't know that. I don't know the details of it. I mean, I just heard a couple days ago, and it was a very short discussion, and I'm sorry I didn't give you all a heads up sooner.
So, I mean, it went from, in 10 years, it went from $32,000 to $89,000.
The median household.
Eighty-nine households, so it went up 30s.
Thirty thousand. I didn't get a $30,000.
But you were reading the first, the first figures you gave were individuals.
Yeah, the males had a median income of $23,273, and I believe this is on the prior census. And the household for the new census appears to be $89,660.
So you're not getting apples to apples because you're not getting the household for the old one.
No, well, you can because you add the male. It is different, yes.
Yeah.
But it's still.
It does seem about $30,000 difference, yeah.
So, and, no, don't, don't go, don't take these figures and run with them and say these are the way they are. But it does seem like a large increase.
And you're right.
This is an average figure, you said.
Well, yeah, this is just quickly looking at my phone.
Let's take it on my slide.
And, and you're right. Some people that have more means coming in could have moved into town just to skew the whole census. We're about a lot of money. I know.
I mean, it could have.
It wasn't just one, like, if it's an average, it's not one person unless Elon Musk. Maybe Elon Musk bought a home here under a different name. We don't know.
Well, in consideration that we lean heavily towards the retired older population, I find it a little difficult to believe.
I don't think you collect $30,000 less than everyone do.
I mean, it, because we were in a lower bracket for Wyndham County and for the area. And now to say that we have lifted ourselves out of this, I find maybe not the truth.
And that data is.
But we will work on that. We will look at that. We can't argue at this meeting, but I certainly think we should see if there is any appeal or argument toward that.
An individual's income doesn't really have a bearing on what they're paying in taxes because it's, I mean, they might be like just living in an average property, right? So it's.
Or not own a home.
It's ridiculous that it throws it off like that. Yeah, or whatever, right?
Yes, I don't own a home, so.
Yeah. It's a silly criteria.
That, that was not my fault. I wish it was, but it wasn't. You had mentioned putting the proposed policy under the boards and officials. Did you still want to talk about that?
Sure, yeah, let's go ahead.
Um, so, uh, when I was reviewing things, um, I just think that we should consider implementing, it's called a record-keeping policy or a time-keeping policy, that just informs what needs to be on a timesheet, specifically, I think something that would be helpful to be on a timesheet is not only listing all of the tasks that you do, but the time that was allocated to, towards those tasks and approximation. You can do that with a handwriting or a punch-in, punch-out clock, I know we don't have the funds, you can handwrite it in, as well as when breaks were taken, um, and just the times on there. As far as a break policy goes, due to the nature of being on a road crew, I don't think it makes sense for us to dictate when they would have to take their breaks, because if they're working on a large project, they shouldn't have to stop in the middle of the day. Instead, I think it should be clear that they get, you know, an hour, at least an hour for lunch, and then how many breaks, and they would just have to record that, um, in their, in their time.
Do you want to come up with some?
I have lots, I have lots of them, and it's not legal advice, I would just be giving a standard one, and then we can go, um, back and forth, yeah.
Yeah, then we can look for what, and go over it and see it.
Yeah. Vermont doesn't have, um, a required number of breaks that you have to take in the day, just has to be reasonable time to eat and go to the bathroom. Um, I don't think where there are babysitters, and should be really telling them when to take a break, but I think that the breaks that they do take, or when they're off the clock, should just be noted. So I can get those for, I can get a proposed policy, uh, for the next meeting if you guys want.
Okay.
Okay, maybe.
We consider that our first read, and then vote on at the following meeting.
Well, maybe we can send it out, and we can look at it and go over it, and we'll talk about.
Yeah. But is there anything that you guys would want? And there, the only thing that I was thinking is that you have to record, like, the, record the task that you do the day and the, the time that was allocated for that.
Seems reasonable.
Janet, do you have an opinion?
I just think they kind of do that now, don't they?
Yeah, but if we.
Uh.
But if we, if we have it in a policy and it's just clear that it's one way and the other.
The, the way that it's now, I would say is insufficient.
I would agree.
Just gonna have to allot time for them to do that, too.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's paid, it's paid time, but I wouldn't assume that it would take too long, because you, it would just be a few sentences.
So if we can look at that and see where we go from there with that.
No, that's all I have for that.
All right, so go on to Rhodes. Rhodes.
Whitney Hill was done. Uh, Matt had to order culverts and gravel, and he worked on Sam Far. And, um, he graded Brookline Road today. That's all I know, I don't think noted home.
I have a question, I don't know if this is true, I heard that Ivor Stevens was the one that did Whitney Road.
He helped with it, because it definitely was not a one-man job, and.
Oh, totally, totally understand.
Eugene is still out of commission.
Yeah, what's, what's the?
We're not gonna talk about that discussion.
Who approves, so, does the road crew decide, like, who approves us paying?
The road foreman.
Aren't we the road foreman, or are we the road commissioner?
We're the road commissioner.
Okay.
Um.
And this is something that.
We had discussed that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm still new, still trying to get.
Yes.
But we had discussed it, when it was needed to, we need somebody.
Yeah, okay, so we don't have to, like, approve hiring Ivor ahead of time, okay.
Yeah, Ivor's already on the.
Okay.
Yeah, he's already on list that he can be used if it's, if it's deemed necessary by the road foreman.
Okay, thanks. So while we're on Rhodes, um, I know some of that, we would mentioned, um, it was possibly storm damage or not, whether we can put in for that, but you had said that it was maybe under.
On what, you mentioned me?
Yeah.
I believe they're putting under for, uh, the, uh, I don't know.
Waste water?
No, no, it's not.
No, the, no.
Not waste water.
It's not waste water.
I know, just give me a minute.
Storm.
Storm drink, yeah, storm water, that's what I meant to say, storm.
I don't know.
Oh.
Storm mitigation?
Yes, storm mitigation, oh, and, um, Reed Road, um, AS Clark is supposed to be up there in October. I'm not sure when in October, but October is the date that he is coming up to work on that.
I haven't seen it for a couple weeks, is it left loose anymore?
It slowly, you know, just a little bit, but it's nothing major at the, at this time. They did place one of the New Jersey barriers sort of close to the edge, and that's the one I keep my eye on. When I see it shifting, I know I'm not gonna drive that way.
Or missing.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Rhodes?
Oh, we got, um, we got, I think, half of our winter sand, did Matt say? I think it was half of the winter sand is delivered, has been delivered.
Yep.
I saw a six thousand and something dollar bill, so that would have been about a third of it, I think, so maybe there's another delivery as well that we haven't gotten a bill for yet.
Yeah, I think there's. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and can you tell, whichever one of you was in communication with Matthew, can you tell him thanks for putting that sign back up? That got put up really quickly, and so.
Yeah, and, and my suggestion next time is just leave a message at the town garage.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's easier that way.
But that got put up really quickly, so do you know when you talk, do you tell him thank you?
Yeah, you do. Yeah.
So that's good.
Um, and Rhodes, seeing we're talking about, um, different stuff, I'd like to make a motion to have a hearing on reclassifying, um, Overhill here, down at the end where they stopped plowing, and discuss Whitney Hill for reclassifying.
What does reclassifying do?
It would, well, depending on how they were reclassified, either we would have to fix them, or we would not have to fix them. Or we would have to fix them certain ways, dependent on the classification.
What are they classified as of now?
Three, both, yeah.
And there's parts that are over.
And parts of Overhill, uh, shouldn't be class three roads.
From, from where, from, oh, this up.
Well, yeah, from there, or at least out to the wood line out there, up, is, uh, shouldn't necessarily.
I guess there's been a lot of problem with people thinking it's a shortcut, because GPS is.
GPS will be right over there.
GPS takes you right over the hill, that I do know, um.
But, uh, with Overhill, we would have to, uh, involve at least Westminster and maybe Rockingham as well.
Why Rockingham?
Well, I don't know if they, do they touch the road, don't they? Down at Rockingham touches Overhill up there.
Like between the two bridges.
So to reclassify that, I think we have to involve, we would need those two boards to be involved as well, uh, to reclassify.
End that class four road now?
I think.
I, I thought it was class four, and.
You might want to jump with the.
Okay.
We check on that, on that, on that, when we run through the bridge deal up there, the second one up. With Westminster there.
But, but even if it is class four, we're still responsible for the culverts and the bridges, and if it were a town trail, we wouldn't be.
Yeah, I, I have a question, what's the, what do you mean by reclassify Whitney, and what would be the reasoning for that?
Well, there's no turnaround for the guys, and the grader can't make it all the way up.
Isn't that the true of a lot of roads, though? I just think it just looks bad that they asked for help, and in response to them asking for help, we're now asking to reclassify the road.
Just a hearing to see what the options are.
Can I just say something?
Ivor went through this ten wheel and at the top.
Go ahead.
Um, Whitney Road was not all the way done, just saying that, you guys say that it was, the road was completely done, and it was not.
I just, it just, to me, it just looks bad that people asked to have help with the road, and the same meeting that we announced that we helped them, we're now talking about reclassifying it, and so that's just.
And in the winter, they only plow to just beyond our driveway, and they have, we've given them permission more times than not, and they do utilize our driveway to back down. There's plenty of room, we make sure vehicles, everything out of the way, so they can easily access our driveway, whether it's in the middle of the night, or whenever, there is never a question.
And I know they don't, they suck right past your house there, but if they had to go all the way, there may be a little trouble turning around up there, but I don't know. But they don't plow that as, as, at the current time, at least.
Right.
Like, if it's a current town road, shouldn't the town be putting in their turnaround if they can't turn around? That would kind of make sense.
And there would be room at the very top.
We could, um.
The residence that's above them, it's not a year-round residence?
No.
No.
However, they do access it in the winter, but they can't drive. They go up in the winter, they park at our house and walk, because they can't drive up. And that's another safety issue, that what if they were up there and they needed a fire truck or an ambulance? How would anyone, nobody could get there?
Would you be asking those to be reclassified if they hadn't have asked for help?
Yeah.
Has this been brought up before?
It's been mentioned several times, not in a meeting, but it's been mentioned several times, and I know years ago it was mentioned.
Do you want to set a date for those hearings?
Well, no, because we would, if we have the hearing on Overhill, we have to involve the other towns.
Oh, the other towns.
Uh, and we have to get their okay with it, and that they will participate with us, um.
Do they need to attend the hearing, or can they just say?
Well, they're gonna be there, they gotta.
They have to be here, okay.
Tom, you had a number down on, uh, on Sleepy Hollow there.
Yeah.
We had to, when we threw up the bridge, it was actually.
When Rockingham throwed up the bridge.
It was Rockingham's bridge, but we had to agree to it for them to throw that up and discontinue it. So you have to have the towns.
Yeah.
And.
Well, what I meant to say is, do they actually have to be here at the hearing, or can they just send a notarized letter saying, yes, it's okay?
No, they have.
They have to be here, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we did that, too, isn't it the same factory or something, when we, what road was?
That was with Townsend.
Yeah, with Townsend, but.
I was gonna tell you, I was going to tell you about when somebody claimed, now I own the house, and has property on it, and paid taxes to this town for over a hundred years.
I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure we would. Um, but certainly, if it was Overhill, that could be good reason to reclassify it from maybe a class four to a trail, town trail. Uh, still leaving it open for people to go up and down it, and, but stopping us from having to put in culverts and bridges if it goes out. I don't think any part of that road can be traversed with a car.
Hey, can someone, it can't be traversed four-wheeling.
You can't get across the first bridge.
You can't get across the first bridge, no.
No.
So, um, we should probably, before we go to setting any kind of a hearing or discussion with that, we should, uh, get some counsel on it, uh, from an attorney, to see what we would need and what we wouldn't need, uh, as to if we, if we're just reclassifying something, uh, say Overhill, we may not need to involve the other towns. But if it is discontinuing, certainly, we would have to have, that might help, um.
Is there barricades up here on that second bridge?
Been up there in quite a while now.
Have we come down to there on a snowmobile or motorcycle?
There's no barricades on Overhill, no.
There's no barricades up there?
Uh-uh.
It must have gone out there once or maybe a year ago. That's quite a drop into that whole idea.
There's, it is a very large drop.
About twelve.
And my concern is, when you do put it into your GPS, it tells you to get off the punney exit and to take the hillside road and come down Overhill Road.
Except you can't get over it at the top with Westminster, because it is.
I'm just telling you, that's what GPS tells people, and.
I can't, but, uh.
Because currently, someone is suing Google Maps, because there was a bridge out, and they drove off of it and got hurt.
Understand, um, but what I'm saying is, it, I think there's signage up there in Westminster about that, I believe, and, um, I believe there's, the last time I was at the top, there was a dirt berm up there that would preclude.
On Westminster side.
On Westminster.
So what part do legal fees come out of, is there a set-line item in our budget for legal fees?
There are.
There are.
Overhill is class three?
Well, at least some of it's class three, the top part may be.
According to the DOT map I'm looking at, they're saying the whole thing's a class three.
That's why we've got to reclassify it.
And you, you thought it was class four, Tom?
I thought it was state in, that I can remember, meeting with Westminster and Rockingham, and the state of the law, and it went to a class four and over.
Yeah, according to the DOT map I'm looking at right now, they still have it classified as a three.
So, it would be good, it would be good to get some clarification on that, at the very, at the very minimum, so.
Yep.
All right, anything else for Rhodes? Um, I will make a motion that we go into executive session, where premature public knowledge would place a town of Athens at a substantial disadvantage reference to personnel matter, um, and a legal matter.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh. All right.